It'll be for you because you've said the invite.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and wrestlers. Nice to have so many show up tonight. I hear all of you guys did pretty good in the girls. Wow, I'm excited. Um, we're going, we're calling this a school board meeting to order. Regular meeting, Monday, March 17th. Please call the rule.
Ben Bishop.
Here.
Jane Lewis.
Yes.
Anne Gerstman.
Here.
Matt Keith.
Mike.
Mike.
Brett Perry.
Jordan Fanning.
Okay, we are going to stamp and pledge and the flag is for some of you behind the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to good news. Mr. Hewlett.
Yeah, I have, I know all the wrestling coaches are here, but Coach Crawford, would you come forward and do the honors of the boys?
Where do you want me to?
Well, right up here. I'm not sure. That one, that one there.
Um, those that are here have the. It's okay. Uh, we had yet another very successful year um on our boys' side. Finished eighteen and seven, regional champions. Um, unfortunately lost at the dual team sectional to Olympia. But we wrestled really, really great all year. We actually just had our banquet tonight and I was um, I was telling the team that just day after day continuing to exceed expectations. We took six boys who qualified for the state tournament, had two more alternates, four girls qualified for the state tournament, brought home two medals from the IHSA state tournaments. Um, just kind of a banner year for the high school and it's only gonna continue with all the other people that are back here that are young, that are coming, right? It's only gonna continue to grow. Uh, it's very, very, very exciting. Um, I'll honor the boys. I'll finish with that one. Um, Jake Hardisty, IHSA state qualifier, one hundred and twenty pounds. Are you gonna want to picture anything? Brad, are you gonna want to picture anything?
Yeah, do we line up behind you?
Behind?
Not the only room we have.
Yeah, we want to line up behind us.
Yep, yep. Jackson Owens, one hundred and six pounds. Dylan Steele, one hundred and twenty-six pounds, IHSA state qualifier. Now a two-time state qualifier. Alex Carrier, one hundred and forty-four pounds. Augustus Lidwell, IHSA state qualifier, one hundred and seventy-five pounds. Is Jack here? Let me see Jack. Jack Jokos, IHSA uh, state alternate this year. Jack's not here. Greedy Smith, IHSA state alternate this year, one hundred and fifty pounds. Both of those uh finished one match away from qualifying for state. Uh, and lastly, our IHSA state place winner Connor Williams placed fifth at two hundred and eighty-five pounds. With one D, now he's got two. He's good now. He's good now. Uh, and then coaches, uh, we have certificates as well for you guys. Uh, Coach Andy Mulholland. Coach Colton Rui. Coach Cam Altman. And myself.
You're right. If she posted somewhere.
Absolutely. Yours better too.
You want to do it again?
No, he was looking for mom's picture.
All right, now I will do the girls' team. Uh, just telling them at the banquet, pretty historic season for the girls. Uh, first ever medal lineup, conference champions, uh, finished, what was it? We can clap for that one. Twelve, thirteen and one. Uh, only losing one, our very first duel meet of the year. Um, I think we only lost by six, if I remember correctly, to Galesburg. So it's kind of a, a pretty great dual team record as well. Qualified uh, four girls to the IHSA state tournament, most in program history. Uh, starting with Avela Brown. Chloe Hedges, IHSA state qualifier at one hundred and fifteen pounds. Katie Marvel. Please, wait, hang on a second. First ever four-time state qualifier in Canton Wrestling history. And Henley Smith. Was a three-time IHSA state finalist. Uh, and then the same coaches, Coach Mulholland. Where'd you go?
Also, hey Zach, also, you said three-time finalist, also the first in program history. Boys or girls?
Boys or girls? All the same coaches. All the same coaches. Next up's our IESA head coach Brian Wilcoxen.
So same kind of story as Zach said, uh, good season, another good season, a lot of kids in it. Again, great to see all the younger kids coming up as well. Um, our season, we finished seventeen and four, which is kind of a little bit inflated, if I say it that way, because of the tournament that we wrestle in, dual teams. So we were actually fifteen and one going into that and we finished seventeen and four. Or excuse me, fifteen. I'll screw that up, sorry. Um, we did win regionals, we sent twenty-five kids to sectionals and of that, we did a little bit of jockeying around to uh, move some things. We'll just say it that way. With what we finished, we won regionals and then we sent five kids to the state tournament and five alternates. So another, again, another good season. So more to come. Uh, for our qualifiers, the first one, a hundred and five pounds Ben Hadso. Uh, Cole Van Middlesworth at one hundred and eighty-five pounds. At heavyweight, we have Sir Sean Allen. And at another hundred and five pounds, we have Judah Hedges who also finished sixth in the state. And then at one eighty-five, we also have Logan Huser, who first time rare state, also finished sixth in state. With that, we also had five alternates. So same as, same story as Zach said, they finished one match away from going to the state tournament. So with that, we have Ash Shepler. Don't stick it out. Brett? Brett Larson? Becoming a theme, Isaiah Williams. You see one over there, Eli Piper. And last one on the list, Johnny Neidker. Me, uh, Coach Harris.
I didn't see Rod. It's Rod here.
Thank you. Coach Bryce Walton. Coach Chris Piper. And Coach Keith who's on the board.
Not present.
You gotta eat it yourself.
It's all good.
Our last review, Head Coach Seth Nolan of IKW.
All right, hello everybody. I'm Seth Nolan, head coach. The uh, IKWF program we have here in Canton just started officially this program two years ago. So been going two years. Uh, been doing very, very well. I think in two years, we've had nine state qualifiers and six state medalists. Uh, with three champions overall. So uh, the IKWF is kind of a age, ages six to fourteen. So some junior high wrestlers are in there too. A lot of our junior high wrestlers come and practice with us as well. Compete with us sometimes on the weekends if their junior high schedule is clear and they don't have any competition. Uh, so you know, our wrestlers are constantly looking to get better and improve uh, on the mat and off the mat. So. Um, our first, we will recognize Chloe Wright. Just say something about Chloe real quick. She finished fifth place at a hundred and fifteen pounds. Took a tough loss the first day of the state tournament. Was up thirteen to three. Um, I'm not making fun of you. Up thirteen to three, took a pretty big loss. Um, battled her way back through the tournament. Ended up wrestling that girl again for fifth and sixth in Pender. So. Next up, uh, was uh, defending state champ, won state last year, first year program, Lindsay Brewer. I'm sorry, Chloe was in the girls' senior division and so was Lindsay. She ended up finishing third place. Phenomenal state tournament run for her too. Uh, ran into some really tough girls, battled her way through it. And I just want to make a note that every one of our wrestlers won their last match of the state tournament. So, yeah. First-year wrestler, wrestled for the club, I think for a year, maybe a year or two before, one year. So Bailey Duchesne. Bailey does look like much, but let me tell you. Her opponents don't ever say that. She uh, came into our program, first-year wrestler, pretty much. Uh, finished uh, in the third, I know what place she finished. Third place in the girls' novice.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, yeah. Seventy-four pound weight class. Next up, Ella Piper. Ella was. Ella was an alternate last year at the state tournament. Uh, ended up getting voted in to uh, help fill the bracket pretty much for her state tournament last year. She actually wrestled, the next wrestler I'm gonna announce last year, sectionals. Unfortunately, they had a meet and one went to state, one didn't. But anyways, Ella still got into the state tournament. They were both a match away from placing last year at the state tournament. This year Ella was wrestling with the junior high as well. So she had a lot more mat time. Came in for the IKWF state series and just, I mean, blew everybody away, darn near pandered way through the state tournament, pinned the girl in the state finals. So she was our state champion this year. Last, what? Yeah, no. Uh, Rea Redding? Reading, reading. I had to do it on purpose. Rea last year was a state qualifier for us. Um, kind of the same story as Ella. Just stuck to it, trusted the process, bought into what we were coaching here in the program, all three programs. Uh, went to the state tournament, won a very close first match, one nothing, and then didn't look back from that. Ended up uh, just dominating her way through the state tournament. Girls' ninety-five pound division. She was actually up a weight class. Um, and she was IKWF state champion this year as well. And I know I don't have certificates for it, but I do want to recognize the three boys that qualified. Ryland Coomer. Liam Munson was a match away from placing. And Wes Guerrero. Wes, Wes was gonna have a great run at state. Unfortunately, he got illegally slammed on top of his head, had to go to the emergency room. He's okay. But he had to withdraw from his state tournament. So, and then my coaches as well, I want to recognize them, Coach Mason Guerrero. The other coaches aren't here, but it's Coach Bryce Bond. Coach Joe Norton. And Coach Nick Wright.
Thank you. Coaches and wrestlers, we want to thank you for coming and we are very, very proud of you. This is a great group of kids. Glad to see it. So thanks a lot, you guys.
Hey, as people are leaving, Seth left one thing out. The intermediate girls finished fourth in state, like Coach. It took home a trophy.
Thanks, thanks Coach Keith.
Yes.
Ella and Rea, they, they did so well in state tournament. Those two combined outscored, I have two hundred and some teams, man, they finished in fourth.
Fourth, took home a trophy.
Hey, do we have any good news from the buildings anybody wants to talk about?
Okay, I'll start off with the uh, district convention and leadership conference for Key Club. Um, this event was commenced on uh, February twenty-first and lasted until, had a duration until um, February twenty-third. Uh, and this took place in Springfield, Illinois at the Crown Plaza. So um, the district leadership convention and uh, leadership conference um, was this held for, as an event for members of Key Club to get an idea, feel of leadership, uh, community service. Um, and these workshops allowed leaders from all over high schools, all over Illinois to um, incorporate some new ideas into their club to better um, their community and their school and their club as a whole. Um, they also did a House of Delegates where students would, um, they would register to be a member of the House of Delegates. And um, what this entailed exactly, um, and more specifically, is that they would vote on district leadership positions. So governor, treasurer, secretary, and I was one of the members and um, we're delegated to just vote on different members. So we uh, learn more of a legislative process of voting, um, and the um, parliamentary procedures. Moving on, the Illinois Council of Teachers of Mathematics Regional Competition. Um, CHS math team led by advisor Chris Dare completed uh, a competition at Western Illinois University from February, February twenty-second to February twenty-third. Um, this allowed students in math team to utilize their math skills and to test their abilities at their full scale. And first place finishes, pre-calculus team, uh, made up of Mia Bowers, Sunshine Bowen, uh, Lucas Williams, Elorinick. Um, they all performed extensively well, um, with Renick and Williams placing first individually. Algebra two team, right, made up of Ryan Fontana, Simon Lutke, Cindy Nee, Andy Wang, Ellie Sawyer, Kevin Nee. All also placed really well, uh, with Wang placing first and Lutke placing second individually. Junior, senior, uh, eight-person team, made up of Fontana, Lutke, Cindy Nee, Kevin Nee, Ellie Sawyer and Sunshine Bowen. Um, Mia Bowers and Elorinick also placed um, very high. Um, there is not a specific place. However, they um, placed extremely well in this uh, event. And the junior, senior, two-person team, made up of Andy Wang and Sunshine Bowen, both placing first in those areas. Second place finishes, geometry team, algebra one team, calculator team, uh, freshman software and eight-person event. Freshman software two-person event also placed second place. Uh, moving on to the YLA final job shadowing event. Um, so this is run by Carlo Bobel. She is the director here. Um, not here, well, at the um, Chamber of Commerce for Canton. Um, and she runs the Youth Leadership Academy, which allows students to get a better idea of their future endeavors regarding their career and their ambitions. Um, on, on March sixth, twenty twenty-five, seniors, senior students in the YLA Youth Leadership Academy um, completed their final job shadowing assignment, which allowed them to get a feel of their future career that they wanted to go into. I did a job shadowing at firefighting, at the fire station and uh, was given a ride along. So it really gives students a feel of the environment, the feel of the responsibilities that are delegated to each individual that are um, in that, associated in that career in question. And some students, well, some students had to do it a later date as Carlo Bobel was still working on finishing uh, the setup for that. Um, however, many students uh, reported positive results with their job shadowing experiences. Moving on to the CHS blood drive, led by um, student council advisors Kim Malone and um, Jody Neptune. Uh, this, this was commenced on um, March fourth from eight, eight AM to two o'clock PM. Um, and it was open to all CHS students who were sixteen and up and staff of Canton High School. Um, in partnership, they collaborated with um, Impact Life to distribute, donated bloods, blood to those in need of blood donations. And this in turn raised, helped to save over seventy lives. And if I remember, it was exactly, even more than a hundred, correct? If I'm correct?
Yes.
So, so it was um, extremely good turnout for this blood drive. Um, and student council members also helped with registration and uh, survey app that, which would allow uh, organizations to um, have a better idea of what their health um, stance was so that they wouldn't be, their health be altered by the donations. And that is, that concludes my student report. Thank you guys.
I would, I would like to add, Owen also spoke at the annual um, chamber dinner banquet and he did a phenomenal job of that. So thank you. Thank you very much.
We're gonna go back to the principles. Nobody jumped up, so I went on back. But let, anyways, any of you have anything to say? Jay, do you have something to say?
No.
Owen's been great.
Anyone else have anything going on exciting that you want to talk about? Yes.
In addition to the state qualifiers for wrestling, we also had two, well, special outfits from a couple of our buildings that placed fourth um, the state basketball tournament. So we had two kids from Ingorsol and a couple from some other schools as well.
Thanks. That's great. Anybody else? No?
The three elementaries have been working together um, to plan um, and prepare for the IAR testing. We've got, you know, we're excited for testing and um, we're gonna kick off testing with a little parade in each building to celebrate our students and get them pumped up um, to do their best. So. and get them pumped up to do their best, so.
Anyone else? I feel like I'm pulling teeth up here. Okay. So, number six, recognition of audience requests to address the Board of Education. Hearing none. Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda starts with 8A and ends with 11, isn't it? 11D. Any questions? No? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Dan, second? Please call the roll.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
11E, consider approval of Alice Ingersoll Gym basketball goals to BSN Sports in the amount of $108,562.
So this was part of the board of tree. We talked about replacing or adding, adding and replacing some of the baskets at Alice Ingersoll Gym for practice. So it is spread, is it six or two?
It's eight. And so it'd be three, three on the fixed bleacher side, three on the movable bleacher side. And then the two fixed ones that are there currently will go back against the wall a little bit. They stick out a little too far.
No questions? Entertain a motion to consider approval of Alice Ingersoll Gym's basketball goals for the amount of $108,562.
So move.
Krulak? Please call the roll.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
11G, consider approval of Eastview Elementary and Westfield Elementary School flooring replacement bid for the amount of $161,000. Skip that, okay. Skip the whole thing. I did? Oh, gosh. Oh, I was gonna go over the plumbing. Yeah, it's been, yeah. Okay, F, consider approval of the Canton High School and Ingersoll Middle School plumbing repair bid in the amount of, I shouldn't skip it, $738,000 to Kemper Construction.
Yeah, so this is the plumbing work. So at Ingersoll, last year we did the main plumbing there in the main hall. It was like, I think it was two inches in bigger piping. So this is the offshoot branches from it. And then the same thing in Canton High School. A lot of these chases will run down the wall, so there also has to be additional coverings on those, so.
Okay. Any questions? Consider the approval for the Canton High School, Ingersoll Middle School plumbing repairs in the amount of $738,000 to Kemper Construction. Dan, Dan, Jane. Please call the roll.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
G, consider approval of Eastview Elementary and Westview Elementary School flooring replacement in the amount of $161,432 to Tiles &amp; Style LLC.
So this is for the pods, the libraries and the wings, the additions hallways. The original, as far as self-life safety work, was just the pod areas, not the, you know, the offshoots, those wings and the libraries. So you have an option here. The base bid to do just the pods was just under $114,000. It's 113,596. We talked about trying to do the libraries and those wings too, and that's what's on the agenda at 161, but. No, no, it would be LVT. In fact, I think we might use the same, yeah, the same color we would use here in the addition.
I just hate this bidding process when it's, we've got local people using local labor, everything local. And they're only a few thousand dollars out and we have to accept a bid from people in Chicago. I wish there was something we could do about that because they sure don't pay taxes in our, in our school district.
Yeah, that's just part of state statute where unless we have a valid reason to disqualify a bidder, we have to take the lowest bid.
I agree, Mike. I understand what you're saying. It's been sad many times. Okay, any questions? Okay, consider approval of Eastview Elementary School and Westview Elementary School flooring replacement bid in the amount of $161,430 to Tiles &amp; Style LLC.
So move.
Dan, second? Please call the roll.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
No.
H, consider approval of the employment contract for Elizabeth Arden, Middle School Assistant Principal, Ingersoll Middle School effective July 1st through 2025 through June 30th, 2027. That's a long time. Any questions? Consider a motion to approve the contract.
So move.
Please call the roll.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Oh, yes.
Hi, consider approval of employment contractor Wes Calvert, Transportation Director, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Any questions? Call for a motion?
So move. Second.
Please call the roll.
Ben Bishop?
Yeah.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
I am back. I am back. And I did catch the end, that one. Sorry.
Wes Calvert, you scared me. Calvert, did you? You okay now? Go on. I guess he is. J, consider approval of employment contract for Mark Gregory, Middle School Assistant Principal, Ingersoll Middle School effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve employment contract for Mark Gregory. What's his name and credit? Please call the roll.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Ready? Okay, consider approval of employment contract for Rodney Harris, Director of Building and Grounds District effective July 1st through 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Any questions?
So move.
Call for the approval of employment contract for Rod Harris. Ben's? So moved. Second? Please call the roll.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
L, consider approval of employment contract for Caitlin Lane?
Lane?
Lane.
Lee Lane? Okay. District Bookkeeper Payroll HR effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Any questions? I'll take a motion to consider approval for Caitlin. Matt?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yes.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
M, consider approval of employment contract for Ashley Ball. What a way that is, Ashley. Uh, let's see here, I lost one. Director of Student Services effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Questions? Entertain a motion to approve the contract for Ashley Ball.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yep.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop? Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Number N, consider approval of employment contract for Kenny Van Houten, Middle School Assistant Activities Director, Ingersoll Middle School effective July 20, 25 through June 30th, 2028. Any questions? Entertain a motion to?
So move.
Second? Please call the roll.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop? Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
11O, consider approval of amended employment contract for Alexis Maxwell, Athletic Director, Canton High School effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Questions? Motion?
So move. Second.
Second? Please call the roll.
Jordan Stanley?
Yes.
Ben Bishop?
Yeah.
Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Ann Gersnich?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Krulak?
Yes.
Brett Perry?
Yes.
That's the longest section.
This is, and we're extremely excited to welcome Ashley and Kenny to our administrative team. So thank you very much.
I don't know Alexis. Is she here?
She is there.
He's awesome.
Awesome. But reports, A District Memphis Report in closing. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, 13, discussion items. Discussion of board meeting times.
Yeah, so last minute, we talked about potentially moving board meetings to 6 o'clock. So, wanna know what the board wants to do. And if you wanna change it, my recommendation would be to start that with July 1.
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Mike?
Sure. Ben, what do you think?
What do I think? We will make that change and. Make that next one. Call me up, God. We're gonna start out with lies, so you're okay. Oh, okay.
E, discussion on the proposed 2025, 26 student handbook for Canton High School, Ingersoll Middle School and District 66 Elementary School.
All right, elementary. Any changes you wanna highlight?
I'm so sorry. I didn't, I didn't bring it along. I will just say that we worked together as an elementary team to review the IPA handbook and the, the high school handbook to make just a few formal changes that were recommended, recommended. One of the changes that we did across the board, across the district was add information about funds for our families with, students with special needs. So I'm really excited about that because we have a contact person. But everything else was just little tweaks here and there, nothing major. Nothing that I think would be questionable, but it was really discussed during the handbook meeting.
Thank you. Middle school?
Uh, same. We worked with the high school also so that there's a nice transition. We did follow the state handbook. No significant changes, just, just small tweaks that we worked throughout the meeting with Ann and the rest of everybody else.
High school?
He's got papers. Like he's got papers.
Never, but it's gonna be okay, okay? It's gonna be okay. It's a change, but I know change is hard. It's gonna be okay. As a parent, I'm like, yes.
All right, so we have, the changes that we have are all legal for 16. So 16, 17, 18-year-old students. That, nothing else that's really major besides what I just passed out, what we're proposing. And we're proposing for the next school year that all students take final exams. That, so how it'll be written is right there with 2025, 2026. Those two paragraphs, and then also we put in there something for activities as well. Our goal as part of our PLC journey that one of our aspects is how do we know what students are learning? So we have those, we've talked about it before, those dipstick checks along the way, those, you know, those check-ins with students. But part of this process is then that cumulative, cumulative assessment. Testing over specifically the essential standard material, not, I know when I was in school, you know, taking 100-question final exam and then on page seven in your history book, what, what color shirt was George Washington wearing? That wouldn't be it. It would be very targeted to the essential standards, the essential material, the material that our teachers have collaborated on over years that they're saying that if you leave Canton High School and you don't know this material, you will not be a successful Canton High School student. That was, that's what we would be assessing students over. Not only is it something that we, we believe, because we went through this with our, first our high school handbook team that included parents, teachers and a student representative. We think post-secondary in general. We have students right now that are studying for the ASBAB to get into the military. We have students right now that are also studying just for final exams at Spooner College and the Running Start Program. I give the same story. I have in every committee meeting, but I have an 82-year-old uncle who owns a farm. And every single year, he has to take a cumulative exam to mix chemicals on the farm and to also haul manure on the farm. And he's gotta do it every year and he has to get a certain score and he's, he has to get recorded. And no one can be in the room with him. He has to take that, that exam every single year. So having this cumulative exam and once again, having it be targeted to the specific essential standards that we have collaborated on over the previous four years. We think it will set students up to be successful. Part of those exams too, they would be vetted by the high school administration team and Mr. Start. So I, I'm not gonna read through the entire proposal, but we also switched the semester grades that are calculated using 90% of the coursework, coursework leading up to the final exam. So first quarter, 45%, second quarter, 45%, semester exam, 10%. Still making it a high stakes test, but it will not be something that will tank a student if they aren't successful on the exam. We also have a spreadsheet that we use to say, okay, I got a 95 quarter one, I got a 73 quarter two. And what do I need to get on this exam to get, let's say, a B? We'll have that spreadsheet. We use that spreadsheet currently in the counseling office. We can share that spreadsheet with all students so they also know that.
What kind of feedback did you get from the committee you had on that? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah. Positive, positive. I would say 95% were, were on board with it and accepting to the change just because of part of the process with our PLC journey. Like I said before, not just testing, just to test a student, to be, be very specific and targeted with what the assessment will be over. Like I said, we have parents, we had teachers, we had a student representative, that admin team, all, all part of the process.
Matt, I was on there as a school board member and also a parent. I think to just piggyback off of that, the biggest thing was the percentage. And students understand and how that can affect their grade. And then like consistency with not like the old-fashioned semester final of 100 questions that's heavily weighted. That was the concern that I heard.
Yeah, those were, as soon as he said it, when he walked to the lecture, and I was thinking, oh my gosh, how much is this gonna be? What's the test gonna be like? But yeah, you answered the question, so it seems pretty thoughtful. And obviously, it's a big change, right? I mean, everybody's known how we do things, but to your point, you're gonna experience this in college and many other places. You're gonna experience it in the trades when you go there, right? You gotta be able to pass functional tests when you get there and they gotta be comprehensive and, yeah.
And, you know, our Running Start students, I'll give one specific example. A Running Start student who was in tears in the counseling office leading up to final exams first semester because she had never taken a final exam and was worried about, I don't know what to study, I don't know how to study, I don't, I don't even know how to taste, take this exam. So I, I think setting them up for success as much as possible. Once, once again, it's not, it would not be an exam because I'm sure many of you took exams like that. It would not be an exam like that. It would not be an exam like that where it's a hundred questions of just gotcha material. We want, once again, it's very targeted. If you don't know this information, you will not be successful after leaving Canton High School.
Any other questions or thoughts?
That's the biggest change as far as our handbook.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only risk here is that, I mean, today with it being attendance based, right? That, you know, now some kid who's on the fence doesn't show up for the, you know, day when they really should have been there, right? We have to manage you that, but it's probably low risk.
And even, even post-COVID, Matt, we have changed that policy. Unexcused absences, so we won't have students that are showing up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Deathbed.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay. Thirteen, C, update on home school students participating in athletics extracurricular activities.
Yeah, so we had our first committee meeting, felt like it went very well. Appreciate everybody that participated in it. One thing that we did want to share tonight is some potential board policy and requirements for home school students to participate. So this is just kind of a FYI. It's not set in stone. It would be something that would be after discussion, that's for sure. But it's, if we do this, it's the biggest, most important piece to it. So just kind of wanted it on your radar, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike and Jordan. What the committee would like to do is wait until after the April board meeting, have another discussion, a deeper discussion at the April board meeting once the new board members are seated, and then have a committee meeting after that, and then have a recommendation for you at the May board meeting.
Yes. Like the first meeting, there was a lot of transparency on both sides. Lot of discussion. Kind of had a rough draft. You know, if we do require this, you know, these are, this is what we need. Couple of the home school gentlemen that were there looked over it. You know, they said they were okay with it. If there's something that we would like to change, then that's more or less why we would want to go back. If there's something, one of us will want to change on this, then we could go back and discuss it with them and go from there.
Yeah, some of the biggest challenges with the policy are approving the curriculum that's being used. Different home school parents use different curriculums, so that's something that, you know, initially getting started, we would have to work through. But we do have in there that they would have to take at least two courses per semester, one of them being a core course. The concern that was had with administration was, we hope that the students involved in athletics, they'll want to take strength training, and we would like to see them involved in more than just zero hour strength training. So that was the rationale behind that. Of course, getting grade checks in for eligibility every Friday, we would need that by three P M. each Friday. And then, of course, they'd have to meet all their IHSA and IE SA requirements. Yeah. Yeah, so drug testing, we would have to work through a few hoops there too, but everything's doable.
How does the two courses work in terms of the day schedule?
It would depend on what they want to take. In my mind, if ideally, they would be back to back time what they're taking. If they're taking something that's not back to back, we sure would invite them to stay at school and do their home school work if they can do that and make it a valuable time for them, so.
It was mentioned, you know, a hundred and sixty kids when they first brought that up, and that was, that's Fulton County. And they say that they thought there would be around forty students. Eighty percent of those will be middle school students or younger. And they actually felt like once those kids get to seventh, eighth grade, they want to return to school anyway.
Yes.
So it would be affecting our younger, younger grades, not the high schools much.
Yeah, I think the middle school schedule is a little bit more challenging in making this work. Seventh and eighth grade is easier than fifth and sixth grade, especially if it's a fifth grade student wanting to participate with two classes. Fifth grade, they don't have typical class periods. They have longer periods of time in ELA than that than in sixth, seventh, and eighth. So there would be some of those logistics to work out also. If anybody has any thoughts or questions, please reach out. And like I say, we'll have it on the April agenda next month for a discussion, and the committee will meet again after that.
Nice job on that. Pretty straightforward. Nice job.
Okay, Building and Grounds Committee meeting update.
Yeah, so Friday, we had a very good Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Couple of things I do want to highlight. High school and Eastview paving. At the high school on the north end of the building, there's the new addition of the concrete. And then we planned on doing just what, east of the auto shop and extending further out east. There was a small chunk of paving in between what the addition is and what's going to be done. Jeff's going to pull it up here, that would be left as old paving, and it's a hodgepodge of concrete from where blacktop's been torn up, and it's some old blacktop that's broken up in there. We are recommending that we go ahead and do that. That way, it's all new concrete all the way through there since both sides will be done. The estimate is about sixty thousand additional dollars to do that area.
Are you taking all that out or just the old blacktop?
It'll all have to go, be able to do it. Some of that's been ripped up because of drainage work. You can see where it leads to the storm drain there. The most effective way to do is just take it all out where you go. Yeah, there's more up towards the building too, so it'd be hard to patchwork it. Yeah, there it is. We want to go ahead and do that and have this part of the bid.
And? Would you like it all in one, like one piece of?
Basically, so this is already planned up here as a parking lot. And all the equipment's there. The guys will already be there. So, you know, for an additional sixty thousand, we can actually make all of this flow. It's just like this is new. All this stuff is new.
Mike's going to take care of it while I was thinking.
Right. Boy, they're doing the other.
Graham and Hyde has been out and looked at it. They can be sealed with foam. You can see the rust on the roof, so the rust is a concern. It's going to continue. Basically, a foam cover over that part where it's rusting at. It'll run the length of the bus garage and then seal it. We believe we'll get anywhere from ten to fifteen additional years out of that roof by doing it. The one risk in it is there, the company will not warranty the work because the rust coming through already. The only other option would be to replace the entire roof and all the insulation under it. The insulation's gotten wet from the leaks. So it's the committee's recommendation to proceed with that repair. We think for the cost, it's very effective. And then while they're doing that, also having pressure wash the low cultural barn side of it. I believe it's about twenty-five hundred dollars to pressure wash that roof at the same time.
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two. And that, that project would not have to be vetted out.
Basically, with the coating, you know, we can spend twenty-six thousand. Hopefully have a decent roof rates ten years or the entire thing off. Spend almost three hundred thousand and put a roof on. I mean, if you think about it, you get ten years out of it at twenty-six thousand.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty good.
Pretty good, Jim. Top or even, okay. Joe, Jordan. Kim. Ann.
Yes.
Okay.
Alice Angersaw, Jim Floor. Brad's been working with the floor refinishing company before. They were thinking it'd be ballpark seventy-five thousand dollars. They're now telling us we can get it sanded down and refinished for forty thousand dollars and we'll paint it however we want. So the price has actually come down on something, which is rare.
Very exciting.
Give you the papers.
Yeah. So if we want to proceed with that, we just, you know, we don't need to approve a design tonight, but we just need to talk to them and get them on the calendar, probably we'll talk September. September. They said it'd take approximately three weeks, start to finish.
And we will lighten the floor, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yes. I asked that question. He said over time, you'll get the yellowing again no matter what type of surface they use. But I said we want to keep it as light as possible for as long as possible. Yes. Yeah.
Ben.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's our hope to get two or three designs and be able to bring those back to the board when it's time to have the board select which one to buy.
Do we need to, did you say we need to pick the design, the board?
Eventually.
Eventually, like I say, we'll have a couple of things designed, get our approval on them, and then have the final design approved by the board. What were you thinking?
I was thinking, do we really need to be designing floors? I mean, I get, I get after the office, the high school office, we probably could get engaged in that, but.
Say, if you want us to pick, we'd be more than willing to. Dallas floor is a big deal for us and a big deal for our panelists.
I have, we're thinking about putting your picture center of the door.
Oh, wow.
If that's the case, don't make that mistake.
In his wrestling uniform.
The GAK building was probably the biggest topic of discussion. Jeff worked through the alternative process of the design build option. That has not gone very well. The numbers we were able to get were probably back in the same ballpark by the time there's additional design piece on it and pay the third party to run that. It's the Building and Grounds Committee recommendation at this time to, for Rod and I to sit down with Matt Longenecker from Graham and Hyde, see what we can scale back in that project if we can, and then go ahead and proceed with bidding that out and see what the numbers actually come in at. As a board, you don't have to accept any bid. So if they come in high and they're not happy with those, you can reject all of them and not do the project. Until we actually bid it out, we don't feel like we're really going to know what that project's going to cost.
We have a challenge for it.
It's fine. Which building got moved?
The GAK. The GAK shack, the center block building. On the side.
It's like ice creams. It's moved.
Playground equipment, we had a discussion about that. Our number one concern is the piece of equipment at Lincoln School that has the ramp, the wooden ramp built up to it. We don't believe we can get that replaced this summer at this point. Last year, when we were trying to do the pre-K playground at Eastview School, we ordered the equipment for now and it still didn't come in until almost August. We would like to go ahead and start planning on replacing that piece of equipment in the summer of twenty-six, potentially along with another piece of equipment at Westview School that's a concern. And then it is, is, I'll say my hope that we then start, you know, get a number from the board to commit X dollars a year towards playground equipment and start working on building out that rotation.
I would like to do that as well.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about that, right? Just like we did on roofs and other things where we weren't maintaining the buildings, you know, whatever, eight, nine, ten years ago, we weren't in a good process where we went ahead and started laying out the long-term plan. I think we need to do the same thing with the playground equipment and just invest a little bit of time, a little bit over a long time and get things in a better condition than they are today.
All right. Last thing that I have, and we didn't talk about this at Building and Grounds, but I think it's a very appropriate time to talk about the high school firearm system we've been having issues with. Update on that, it was, we hope fixed today by Thompson Electric. We already had planned to put a new panel in. That's actually two panels here at the high school. It's going in over spring break. But the issues we've had over the summer, we're also going to replace all the sensors in the ceilings, so. We're not sure what that's going to cost yet. We're looking into it. If the bid gets over fifty thousand dollars, or the cost gets over fifty thousand dollars, then we'll be coming to you for an approval for that bid. It is considered emergency work at this point, so we would not have to bid it out. We could stick with the company that we're with, with the three, four CSPO by the board, so. Hopefully, it stays under those thresholds. If it doesn't, then we'll be coming to you for approval. So that, that is in the process of getting fixed, and hopefully the repair fixes it for now. Just as a reminder, we do have the IMSAC project going on, the Canton High School roof, the CTE renovations, and of course, the projects that were approved tonight. So we have anywhere from, might I say, forty-five million dollars worth of work planned for the summer again. It's going to be a busy summer. Questions?
Information items, A, freedom of information request from alum dated, data?
Yeah. So they were asking about our insurance policy, our Wolfens Con liability. Jeff puts that information together and we got that sent to them.
Freedom of information request from Miller, Harlow, and Triggs.
Miller, Harlow, and Triggs was asking about salary information benefits. They're working with the school district on negotiations, so that information will share with them.
The I A S B Western Division Dinner meeting is here.
April third. Just need to know if anybody wants to attend, so we can get you on the list. It is a free meal.
It is a free meal. It's a good meal.
Tour start at five thirty, dinner at six, presentation at seven, dinner at eight.
It'd be nice, most of the time board members come just because we're here. They wouldn't make our showing, but if you want to come, let us know, so we'll be sure to have a big banner.
If you're not sure, you can email myself or let us know this week.
We'll be there. Feature agenda items. Here we go. Entertain a motion to go into closed session at eight oh six.
So moved, second.
Ben Bishop? Jane Lewis?
Yeah.
Ann Gerson? Matt Keane?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Ashley. Nice to meet you.
8:42, entertain a motion to leave this meeting.
So moved.
Please call a roll.
Ann Gerson?
Yes.
Matt Keys?
Yes.
Mike Grilakis? Jane Lewis?
Yes.
Brent Perry?
Brent?
Yes.
And Ben Bishop.
Thank you everybody.
Thanks Matt.
Take care.